No intro. Happy holidays to all and welcome to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 21st, 2021, shortest day of the year. So hopefully we all get out of here at 7:30. If we could call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here, thank you very much. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilwoman Brennan?
I'm going to approve the agenda of December 21st, 2021.
Whiting, second. I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead to item number four, consent business. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lehman?
4A3, A4, A5, and 4C3.
4A3, 4A5, and 4C3.
4A4.
Oh, 4A. I apologize.
4A5 and 4C3.
All right. Others? Motion?
I'm going to-
Councilwoman Brennan?
To approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda with no further discussion. Before we read it, before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 21 December of 2021. 4A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 7 December of 2021. 4A2 adopts ordinance number O2021-TAC 027, establishing city fees for 2022. 4A6 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC 182, which accepts gifts and donations received from outside organizations as presented. 4A7 approves taxicab business licenses for Bradford Transportation Incorporated, doing business as Shakopee Taxi, TNT Taxi, and Courtesy Ride. 4A8 approves pawn shop business licenses for Excel Pawn Incorporated, doing business as Excel Pawn and Jewelry, and for Pawn Exchange LLC. 4A9 approves the updated personnel handbook. 4A10 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC 180, which approves the memorandum of agreement between Minnesota and local governments and authorizes participation in the national opioid settlements. 4B1 approves the purchase of security window film, all and the police station. 4C1 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC 176, which authorizes a construction cooperative agreement with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation and Scott County for the CSAH-83 project. 4C2 approves plans and specifications and orders the advertisement of bids for the drainage and flood prevention improvement projects, which are Storm 20002, and includes the alley southeast of the intersection of 7th Avenue West and Apgar Street, and for the alley northeast of the intersection of 6th Avenue and Spencer Street. 4C4 accepts Minnesota Department of Transportation Speed Limit Authorization Report and authorizes posting the recommended 45 mile per hour speed limit zone for Stagecoach Road between Preserve Trail and County Road 101. And finally, 4C5 adopts resolution number R2021-TAC 178, which authorizes acceptance of a Minnesota DNR Emerald Ashbore grant.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. The, I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The modified consent has been approved. Thank you. Let's move ahead then to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Have we received any electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Seeing none then, we would move ahead to item number six, business removed from consent. And let's start with 4A3, Councilwoman Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Budget amendments. As we all know, I still haven't gotten my new glasses, so reading these very, very fine, fine numbers is difficult at best. Couple of questions. If I'm reading this correct, we've got 1.7 million of federal grants that we're adding in as budget amendments? Correct?
Councilmember Lehman, actually in total, it's the 2.2 million, well, the 2.3 million from the coronavirus relief funds. So it's spread out amongst the funds. Part of it went to the EDA because we had some EDA expenses in it, and part went to SURE. But 2.3 million in total.
And, okay, well, looks like the top line says federal grants of 1.7. So we're SURE and EDA. Okay, so there's a little bit there. How much of these amendments, and these are 21 expenses, that are being funded from federal dollars? How much of this 21 expenses are carried over into the 22 budget?
Okay, so out of these expenditures, you can see there's the million dollar net on the bottom, so there's a million dollars that we haven't allocated for anything currently. There's a couple of items on here that we haven't received yet. So the sewer jetter we haven't received yet, and the security window film, which is on today's agenda, we haven't received. So there'll be a handful of these items that'll probably be carried forward into next year.
Maybe I could rephrase my question. Some of these are one-time cost items, a jetter, okay, a window film. These are not something that you're gonna do every single year. Others are ongoing expenses, 2% COLA, for instance. So a lot, what percentage or how much of these costs in total are gonna be expenses in the normal budget of 22?
Okay, so the 2% cost of living adjustment, we've got included in our 2020, 2022 budget, so that would be one of the items that would carry forward. And then I think you'd probably have some, you know, additional costs with the parklets as far as setting those up, breaking them down each year. Otherwise, those, all those other items are one-time items.
And, and if I may, the 2% was the one-time allocation for 2021. It has been incorporated in the budget for 2022, so it doesn't come from the federal funds anymore. All it simply did was, we used that allocation because we had it as opposed to before when we didn't, and we didn't know what the impact of COVID was gonna be on the organization. So that has already been budgeted for 2022.
Is that an additional 2% or the original 2%?
Anytime you use one-time funding for an ongoing expense, you essentially have to double it that first time. So essentially, the effect of it is being plugged into the 2022 budget.
Okay, now I'm more confused than when I got here.
Let's, I'd like to ask clarifying questions. These are amendments-
Correct. This has already been done.
-to the 2021 budget.
The budget. Yes.
To the 2021 budget, we offered our-
All of these have been approved.
Right. And I get that, but it's, some of this has got phrasing of 2022. The 2% one-time COLA was amended and approved to be in the 2021 budget.
Correct.
And these, the items that are listed, we have all seen before, we have all approved, and these are bookkeeping amendments for 2021.
Well, if I'm reading this document correctly, we're paying for the 2% COLA using COVID funds in 21.
You did.
We're also levying the taxpayers for 2% COLA in 22 in the budget.
That's correct, because that is for 22.
So there's gonna be a separate 2% increase in 22 that we budgeted for.
That we already budgeted for.
Separate from the 2021.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any other costs that are gonna be, other than payroll type issues, that are moving forward into the 22 budget?
Other than what Mr. Reinhardt has already discussed, no. We still have the funds, the federal funds that were allocated in 21, which will be spent at some point, I presume, in 22.
Is-
Councilwoman Lehman?
The, I guess I really don't like this format. Is this an ongoing thing? Normally, I'm used to a budget that we try to stick to, and if we're gonna amend something, you know, if somebody says, gee, I wanna buy this road grader instead of this plow truck or something, you tit for tat and, and you're still close to your original budget. And I know the federal funds throw a loop in all this, but is this gonna be a normal moving forward? Or is this just convoluted because of the federal dollars?
It appears convoluted because of the federal dollars. What it actually is, is by doing it this way, which is different, we did it this way last year as well, but it actually puts everything on one document. So if anybody has any questions about budget amendments, you all have already taken all of these actions, but we've never put it in one document and said at the end of the year, okay, now we're gonna show you exactly what we're doing. It really is about transparency. We can have the public sift through the last year's balances to try to figure things out, but all this is, is making it clear on one document so they can see what we're doing.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Thank you. You kind of bolstered the point I was gonna make. For years, we've been trying to get the, the numbers closer because we had padded the numbers for so many years, and we could slop back and forth because we had so much extra money. This was an attempt to get closer to the numbers and then for transparency, and then when there was something that was gonna be brought forward in this format. If it's in the format, if you don't like the format, I'm sure they can do something with the format. But this was the part of the plan we've been discussing for years.
Well, it's, Mayor, if I may.
Certainly, Mayor.
What's shocking is the amount that was spent above and beyond the original 2021 budget.
Well, that's because we had the influx of federal funds.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to point out. So the question is, if we didn't have that, what would this document look like? Hopefully, it'd be much smaller, right? And the last question I have is, what are we anticipating for a 2021 budget surplus, fund surplus, general fund surplus?
Councilmember Lehman, that's always a difficult question because you have journal entries, accruals, and things getting posted back even after, after year-end. I know I gave a number at the last meeting, between 500,000 to a million, I thought, would be left after we make some of our adjustments. And within our policy, fund balance policy too, we have to set aside, set aside a certain amount for next year's budget expenditures. Since our budget is going up, there's additional allocation that would be put towards that. But, so I, my back of the napkin, you know, best estimate between 500,000 to a million, I think, would be available after those.
Okay.
We won't, we, you know, we're, we're looking later on.
Well, not till February, March, I get it.
Yeah, till they true up numbers, to know that true number. But, you know, I know years ago, we'd amend the budget in June or July on something, and then maybe another one in September, and then you'd get closer, and then you go, oh, we amended that, we amended that. This, all on one page, all done at once.
It's three pages. It's three pages in my pack.
Well, I mean, but it, you know, the, I think there's more clarity to it this way, rather than, oh yeah, we did that in July, and, you know. So, Councilwoman Contreras?
If we're ready, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021 budget amendments in accordance with the attached documents titled, 2021 Proposed Budget Amendments.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion?
I just want to say thank you because I, I do recall these when we did approve them and, and recall that they were gonna be listed out here. So I appreciate the work that you did to, to collect all and put it into one document.
Okay. Motion on the table, a second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for the discussion. Now let's move ahead to 4A4, which is 2022 EDA Special Benefit Levy. Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, I took it off to be consistent so I could vote against it. Obviously, I'm not in favor of adding a tax to our existing residents to have them pay forward for development or growth, but that's basically what we're doing, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Whiting?
I'd like to motion to adopt resolution number R2021-163, approving the EDA Special Benefit Levy of $500,000 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 469.033 subdivision 6.
I have a motion and a second on the table for this. Further discussion on the EDA levy? This is done at the, at the council lever, level. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to 4A5, approval of the 2021 Property Tax Levy Collection in 2022 and the 2022 Annual Budget. Councilwoman Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know at our workshop, I asked that this be looked at hard to try to reduce that 7% levy increase. Doesn't look like we achieved that. I think 7% is too much at this point. I think next year's gonna be a lot, a lot harder on our residents. We're already seeing inflation that we haven't seen in 40 years. We've seen gas prices and energy heating prices up, and now later on, we're gonna take a portion of their water and electric for economic development also. So we're, it seems like we're doing everything we possibly can to hurt the constituents we're supposed to be serving, financially anyway. And I, I'm, I'm trying to have a smaller government, more defined government, and less burdensome on the people that we serve. So not real happy with the size of the increase.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I certainly can understand, as being a fiscal conservative myself, any concerns about taxes and raising them. But I have to say that the worst thing you can do is not keep up with inflation and not keep up with things that we have in place that keep us where we are as an organization and as a city. And I want to remind everybody again, and this is something you've heard me say a thousand times, because it's, it's something that we all should be proud of. The City of Shakopee is one of the least taxed municipalities in the metro area. That's a fact. It's the truth. Nothing we do tonight will change that. We will always be looking to make that to be the case. But we, we cannot simply close our eyes and say, oh, well, we're gonna have a, a 3%, for example, and nothing more. And, and because what that does is that tends to shift the burden of, of programs, and the cost of programs. And it's, it's frankly more strategic, as opposed to looking at it from a daily perspective or a yearly perspective, it's more strategic, to understand what the long-term effects of, of your tax policy is, and both, and we will continue into the future, as long as I am here, to do everything we can to make the tax burden as small as we possibly can.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brennan?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number R2021-161 and R2021-162, approving the 21 property, property tax levy collectible in 2022 in the 2022 annual budget. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I know our community has been very, very conservative for a very, very long time, even during the last couple of years, we've been extra careful. I think our community is prudent. This number seems high in a singular look at 6.9%. But we had a slide and a presentation of our levy last two weeks ago that showed a five-year stack of our levy, and I don't have a copy of that in front of me today, but, you know, singularly, or do you wanna look at it over time? And I am, I am a person that wants to look at not just a blip, I wanna look at it over long term. And the five-year levy stack compared to our comparable cities shows us in the bottom third, even with what we're looking at today. We never wanna fall behind. We, I understand, Councilwoman Lehman, you, you wanna stay away from those real highs and the real lows, but I, I've been around long enough, and I believe a good government, good conservative government, always is putting a pencil to the numbers and trying to make it, the impact as least as possible. Further discussion? Discussion? Motion on the table in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next consent item. 4A3, Forestry Manual Specifications Update and-
C3.
4C3.
4C3. Forestry Manual specification updates and tree ordinance. Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, my concern with this is the same as I raised last time, where we're basically authorizing the trespassing on private property to inspect private trees without any cause. We're basically saying, we're gonna go onto somebody's private property, violating their property rights, look at their tree to see if there's something wrong with a privately owned tree, without knowing that there's an issue ahead of time. And I, I think that's a violation of property rights. I know the staff said they wouldn't do that, but they weren't willing to take that line out of the policy, so.
Councilwoman Brennan, did you-
No. I, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number O2021-025, amending Shakopee City Code Chapter 90.05, Regulation of Grassweeds and Trees Along Streets.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Whiting. Councilwoman Lehman, I, I'm taken back by the word trespassing. I, I don't think that would happen in our community, but if you had a tree in your yard that was right next to the property line, next to a fence, next to a power pole, next to someone's garage, and it was an aging, dying tree, maybe the city would knock on the door of that resident and discuss that tree.
We, Mayor, we used that exact example in the last discussion on this topic, and that was my argument. We don't need property owner permission to go on a city-owned easement or a utility easement to maintain that easement, or the right-of-way for that matter. So the wording would not need to apply to that situation. This is strictly going on private property that's not over an easement, over right-of-way, to inspect a tree, to see if it's somebody's personal private tree, to see if it has a problem. And you'd think in order to violate somebody's rights, you'd have to have cause, just cause.
Mr. Reynolds?
Staff has not changed that, Councilwoman Lehman. That is something that has been in the ordinance for probably as long as you've said on council.
And it should be changed.
Steve?
Mayor and council members, and I, and I would add that we, we, as I indicated before, we do not have a proactive program. We're not out trampling in people's yards and trespassing. We simply, we do not do that. Usually with trees, we can see everything roadside, and, and as Mr. Reynolds said, this, this ordinance has been around for a while, so we haven't had issues with it. I'm not aware of any issues of, of us ever being accused of trespassing. And, you know, as, as contrary to just cause, like I say, we, when there's these dying, dead or diseased trees on people's yards, we can typically see that from the street, and we're, to that trampling across people's yards thing, we will, we contact the people more times than not before we, you know, when we see this issue, because we ask them and we tell them, you have a dead tree here, you need to do something like that, or you, or you- Because we ask them and, and we tell them, you have a dead tree here, you need to do something like that, or you, or you need to remove the tree, it's your tree. And then where the city would typically intervene is if they didn't remove that tree because it's a, it can be a hazard. Or it can be, you know, it can affect a lot of adjacent trees and the community trees for that example. So that's why we have that, that's why it was incorporated into the program. So I wanted to give that background that we, that we respect people's property rights, and I'm not aware of any trespassing since I've been here. So I just wanted to provide that info.
Counselor Whiting.
As one of those people that had a diseased and dying tree for many years on my property, working with the city. Over time, it was no, it was no, you gotta get rid of this tree. It was, over time, working with the city until we could manage to get rid of that tree. So I had no problems with the way the city worked. Of course, I have a special, sitting on this council, maybe a little different role, but I think the city treats me like they would treat anybody, and they work with the community, the, the citizens to make sure they know that the tree is unsafe and needs to be removed. So I think that's my experience.
Counselor Lehman.
I'm kind of at a loss to why you're not willing to change the wording to match what you're telling us here. I mean, the wording says that we're authorizing the city to basically enter anybody's property to look at a tree, to see if it's got an issue. And that's what it says, and that's not what you're telling me we do. So we should make the policy match what you're telling us instead of having two opposing forces going on here.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
As, as council knows, if council wants to change this, then council should make a motion and should pass that motion. What we're saying is that this staff has changed, not changed that particular clause that you have a problem with. We, 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 we have not done anything to that. That's not why this is in front of you. If you wanna make a change, then I would encourage anyone that wants to do so to make a motion and make that change.
Counselor Lehman.
I'll make a motion directing staff to make the necessary change and bring it back.
Motion on the table. Motion on the table.
I'll second it for discussion.
I now have a second discussion.
I just don't see the reason, if it hasn't, it's not broken, why fix what's not broken? It's, it's, I mean, it's been like, like they've explained, it's been on there for so long without an issue. Why are we making it issue tonight when there's really not an issue out there?
Counselor Lehman.
First, first I would say if you're gonna, if you're gonna pass policies that are violations of people property rights or any constitutional right, I think that's a bad precedent. And I think when somebody points that out, I think, I'm not asking to scrap the whole policy. I'm asking to word it in a manner that, you know, if the city sees from the street that there's a problem with a tree, their first action is to go to the door and knock on a door and have a communication with the property owner. If that doesn't work, second action is to give them a notice that the city is going to take care of this problem in this much time if they don't wanna do it themselves or hire a professional to do it. Third action, the city's gonna come in by this timeline and do it for them at their expense. I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Thompson, in your evaluation as the city attorney, is this as any way of a constitutional violation of anybody's rights?
Mr. Reynolds, members of council, yeah. What we're talking about here is entering onto land, not going to people's houses.
No, we're talking about going to people's private property.
I understand that.
To be a house in the city of Shakopee to look at a tree on private property, not over an easement, not over a right of way, to see if that tree has an issue of any kind.
No, I understand that. What I, what I'm saying is the law is different with respect to going onto land as opposed to entering someone's house. There's a difference. The, the legal standard is different. So, and state law does authorize cities to go on private property to abate nuisances. And if I'm recalling the statute correctly, I was just trying to look it up, but I'm, I'm almost sure it also, it specifically deals with diseased trees.
They don't know if it's a nuisance or not. They're, they're entering to find out if it's a nuisance. That's the problem.
Well, what I, what I thought I heard Mr. Lillihawk say is most of the times they see it from the street and they can tell it's a diseased tree from the street. And this, that's not a search, that's not a seizure. You can look at public, a private property from the public right of way. So that's what I heard, so.
Thank you for the clarity. Counselor Whiting.
I'll call the question.
I have a motion on the table in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
That motion fails. We do have a main motion, I believe, on the table. For the.
The first one.
Motion to approve.
Number one.
Yeah.
This.
For the first one.
The first portion.
The first portion?
Yep.
So motion in a second on the table. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Counselor Contreras.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number O twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-six amending Shakopee City Code, chapter one thirty dot fifteen shade, tree, disease and shade tree pass control and prevention, which is the second one.
Second.
I have a motion in a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one six nine adopting the forestry specifications manual.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion. And just a point of reference, Counselor Lehman, you've been on this council for eighteen years? Stand, correct me if I'm wrong. Has this ever been an issue before the city council?
Uh, I'm not, I don't know. A lot of times the legal issues we're not aware of.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you for that.
Actually, Mayor, it was an issue because there was a threatened lawsuit by the city to the property on eighty-three and Conroy Old sixteen for the clear cutting of privately owned trees. And the city was threatening a lawsuit against the property owner for the value of the trees lost. And I think you know what the outcome of that was.
I'd have to review that.
Yeah, the city did not collect on that. It was found that the property owner had rights to his own private property.
To cut down his own trees.
But that's not this issue.
That's not related to this.
That's not related to this issue.
At all. It's not an apple-to-apple comparison. Motion on the table in a second. Further discussion, Counselor Whiting. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Let's move ahead to seven A, which is a public hearing for a vacation. Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Public hearing is now open, and Michael will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a vacation of drainage and utility easements in the Dean Lakes Eighth Edition. This is the subject property. You can see it's adjacent to Shutterfly, a piece of property owned by the city of Shakopee and the Dean Lakes Conservation Association. Applicant is Alliant Engineering. The holder, property owner is Denali Holdings. Current zoning is BP Business Park. Twenty forty comp plan shows this as a mixed employment center. The site is roughly twenty-six acres. Proposed vacation is an easement for a water main loop for the previously planned TriStar building that is not going to be built. There are no existing utilities in this easement area. The lot is for sale and the property owner is requesting the vacation to allow for more flexibility for future development since there are no utilities currently in that easement. This is the survey of the subject property. And this is the lot one, block one, showing that easement, which is right here. So this is the easement that was designed originally. It was a fire service for a building that TriStar had planned. The building was never built, and so the applicant would like to get rid of this because there's no need for it, and they're trying to sell the property. So planning commission recommended approval of the vacation by a vote of five to zero. Staff recommend city council approve the proposed vacation per the conditions in the draft resolution.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? I just, my question, I, I've seen straight vacations on something we're, we're not gonna use. We're gonna vacate this. There may be development coming forward. Usually we kinda have it hand in hand if, if the easement, we vacate an easement and then we're gonna get it in the plat, and this seems to stand alone. That's my only issue.
Mayor and council, again, this was strictly a fireline easement for a building that's not gonna be built once they sell it. If a new one is needed somewhere on the property, they'll come back with an easement. But right now, this is an encumbrance on the property, and as I said, the property owner is trying to sell it, and this app serves no purpose right now.
Counselor Lehman.
So Mayor, Mr. Kersky, you correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't, didn't do this and somebody wanted to put a building right on top of that easement, they would end up coming back through the same process. And they probably wouldn't wanna make the investment without knowing that they were able to put a building over top of something that's currently there.
Mayor and council, that's correct. This is, they're trying to get ahead of a situation where they've had plenty of people look at this and they all go, who's gonna get rid of the easement? So we're getting rid of it right now, and they're gonna try and market it. Actually talked to the property owner's representative tonight, and this site actually is a potential for a project that's looking at the Minnesota area. And again, this easement would be an issue because it says you can't have any easements on the property that need to be removed.
Counselor Lehman.
I do have one question, Mayor. The, where this easement stretches toward another parcel, will a future different alignment alter parcels that are next to it that are already developed?
Mayor and council, no. So the water line comes in at those locations, and whatever gets developed on this site will use that water line. There's already some, as you can see from this survey, there's a lot of easements already on the property. You can see there's more than a hundred feet along Highway one sixty-nine for gas, power, and other things. This is just a piece that happens to run right through the property that serves no purpose.
And then just to follow up, where this was designed for looping for a planned building that never got built, as you stated. But if we vacate this and then they come in with a plan on a building, they, we're still gonna get an easement for the looping requirement, right?
Mayor and council, it may not be necessary because depending where the new building goes, it may be able to looped in the, be looped in the existing easements. As again, if you look at this larger survey, there's easements all over this property that they could use. That, this particular one was done because their particular design, you can see the stubs that are on this were to go into a building that was gonna be on the property.
Okay. I got it. More questions of staff? More questions of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing with the applicant or their representative. Like to come forward and make comment on this? Please, please come forward, speaking to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Tom Shaver, one oh seven Grove Lane, Wayzata, Minnesota. I'm, on behalf of Inland Development Partners, we're working with the Dahl family to help facilitate the sale of the ground. We've been working with staff. Michael framed the question very well. It is an encumbrance to the, our ability to sell, and it was strictly put in place by my partner, Ken Carlsen, years ago on behalf of TriStar in two thousand twelve. So I appreciate your consideration.
Questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward, make comment on this vacation? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion to close public hearing in a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Counselors? Counselor Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a, a motion to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one eighty-one, vacation of drainage and utility easement in Dean's Lake Eighth Edition.
I have a, a motion in a second by Counselor Lehman.
Second.
Thank you very much. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. The vacation is granted. Thank you. Let's move ahead to eight A one, which is a financial monthly review for November of twenty twenty-one. Nate, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'll be covering the monthly financial review through November. Uh, this slide shows the general fund through November, so at this point we're at ninety-one point five percent through the year. We did receive our second half property tax settlement from the county on December first, which isn't reflected through November, but it brings us closer to budget expectations for property tax revenue. We are tracking exceed budget expectations for revenue and under, or at least in line with budget on the expenditure side. I mean, we will finish the year on a positive note. The column on the right side of the month report coincides with the budget amendments, which we discussed earlier and was approved with tonight's consent agenda. These amendments explain many of the current budget variances, and then once these are entered into the system, they'll bring us in line with budget. I'll walk you through those budget amendments here on the next couple of slides. Currently, we have seven identified budget amendments. For each of the budget amendments, we've also provided the reference to the city council meeting that these projects or expenses were approved or discussed. The largest would be, would be the coronavirus fiscal recovery funds. We received just under two point two million in July. Last month, we actually received an additional distribution of seventy-two thousand. This was a result of other cities and counties that did not request their allocation prior to the deadline. These funds were then applied to the pool and reallocated to cities and counties. The budget amendment really provides you an update on what has been approved for spending so far, which would include the gateway signage, parklets, contracted services for marketing and entrepreneurship with momentum and integrated, sewer jetter replacement, cost of living adjustment, downtown digital message board replacement, and additionally, security window film for the police department and city hall campus, which was approved with tonight's consent agenda. We have about one million still available from twenty twenty-one, and then again, just a reminder, in twenty twenty-two, we'll receive another second half allocation of two point three million. The remaining budget amendments are listed here. Budget amendment number two relates to the additional building permit revenues and costs for the new building, for a new building inspector, electric vehicles, and contract with Stan Tech for master planning and AUAR. We also have budget amendments for the hiring of a graduate engineer, communication specialist, conversion of an ice arena, and recreation specialist from part-time to full-time, and the hiring of temporary help to complete the conversion of HR records to electronic format. The last one is new. Public works in total is under budget, but the parks division was over budget through November, projected through the end of the year. This budget amendment reallocates wages from other public works divisions to parks. Actual staff hours worked were coded to parks versus where we had this budgeted, at least anticipated those hours to be within the budget. We also have included an amendment of additional cost of increased water usage in the summer for the parks department and then additional handicap accessible portable restrooms. Here is the recreational facility operations budget to actual. Sand Venture, again, revenues for the year were two hundred and sixty-two thousand, which exceeded our budget expectations. For the ice arena, revenues are up from last year. In terms of the budget, we're at ninety percent of budgeted revenues, and then the community center remains ahead of where we were at this time last year. And then in consideration of the annual budget, we're at about seventy-three percent of budgeted revenues. So I can stand for any questions you might have.
Questions? Back again, just to clarify, we had a little of this discussion earlier. These budget amendments is for twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
All right. And all of these we've previously talked about and approved. I just wanna be very clear on that. Other questions of staff? Counselor Lehman.
Well, just a kudos for the little BA two, BA one, BA three, and then the following page where you could actually track that to what it actually was. Perfect. That's what I was asking for.
This is better than, than this, right?
Well, yes, yes. Where you can take the line item on this sheet and find budget amendments. Where you can take the line item on this sheet and find budget amendment number one to the other sheet, yep.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? The, just to clarify again, we've asked this question before. In the revenue side on intergovernmental, and that's where the COVID money is, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I had, if there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move ahead then to eight A two, the Shakopee Public Utility, City of Shakopee Pilot Agreement. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, it is with great delight that I can come before council today and put something to bed that we've been wrestling with for, for, four years or so now. We all know the history of this particular issue with both Shakopee Public Utilities and the city. And I don't think it does anybody any good to go back and talk about that. What I'd like to talk about is the future. This particular document and, and first of all, special kudos to the leadership of Shakopee Public Utilities, which are, which are here, both Kathy Mokel and Greg Trent, who, who, who quite literally, in connection with Mayor Mars and I forget who else was on the committee. I guess that was it, other than me, in discussions that we had with this, along with obviously staff members. Just having the ability to sit down with someone and talk about the issue in an open, transparent manner and, and, and be able to rely upon what you're being told was striking. And it facilitated us to put together a long-term agreement that frankly is going to be of benefit both for the city and of Shakopee, or excuse me, Shakopee Public Utilities as well. I especially want to give credit to the innovative thought that came from Shakopee Public Utilities in making an actual investment in economic development by adding a point five percent that will go into the EDA. That was not something that came from the city, that came from Shakopee Public Utilities. And that is true innovation. It's something frankly that city staff and, and I don't think any of us had, had, had thought about. But there was a recognition that, you know, that, that they wanted to be a part of that economic growth. And I applaud the willingness of the utility to be part of that partnership. And thank you very much for a very good discussion on difficult issues that we were able to come together on. And I'm, I'm simply delighted that we have a real partnership for the future. I've said this publicly, I'm committed to Shakopee Public Utilities' success. Mr. Trent knows that if he needs something from my staff, he only has to pick up the phone. And that's, and that's a long-term commitment. And we will be successful together. And as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is the, this is the ink on that future. And I can't thank both of you enough and, and the whole utility and all of that you went through in the last couple of years. It's been striking and you have my and my staff's, thanks for, for your willingness to sit down and work something out. And, and this is really tremendous and I think sets the, the standard for the future with an excellent partnership.
Thank you for that. Greg, Kathy, do you want to come forward and make comment? Welcome, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I had three goals this year when I was appointed the President of the Commission. And that was to increase the transparency with the city, increase the collaboration with the city, and to get this pilot agreement finished and across the finish line. And so, I'm excited too tonight to be presenting this, that it's approved by our commission. And that, I think the innovation from, that Mr. Reynolds was talking about with EDA, that was a goal of our commission this year, was we wanted to have a part in economic development, but we didn't want to be the ones choosing winners and losers. We felt that the council did a better job of doing that and so that was part of the reason that we put it, it part of the pilot agreement, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The city works very hard at picking winners and our partnership with the utility couldn't be stronger compared to what it was. It'd come a long way. You and I worked on this agreement along with Greg, Bill Reynolds, the efforts with Jody Brennan being on your board. This offers continuity, it offers collaboration, it offers long-term certainty. And the togetherness of how it was written, developed, and put together, it's different than it has been in the past. I take a lot of pride in this and I know you do too, along with the great work that has happened over at the utility. And this agreement, if it passes on the city side, will be very enduring for a long time. Hopefully, we won't have to discuss it. I like the idea that it offers the utility certainty and then the city certainty. I mean, that's a big thing in business, right? Where, where you're at, where you're going, you know these things are, are there. So, hats off to this and thank you ver, thank you very much.
Thank you too. It was great working with you.
Counselor Lehman?
Two questions. The first is, is the half a percent of water and electricity sales to EDA or economic development, is that above and beyond the five point five percent or is it five percent and that point five of that five point five?
It's including, so it's the five point five with the five percent towards EDA, so that's six total.
So, it's five percent in the?
Or point five in the EDA.
It, it's six percent in total.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Follow-up question then is, where is the five and, the half a percent in water and electricity, where is that revenue coming from? Is it coming from the ratepayers?
I will have Greg.
Thank you. Greg Trent, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, that would be coming from the ratepayers. We have done a, a rate analysis this last year in both water and electric rates. And we wanted to make sure that when we did this, and that was some of our discussion early on, and what we, you know, talked to the city about is, is if, if we can do this and have competitive rates and in the organization, we wanted to do a little bit more. And that was one of the things that we, we addressed. And we made sure when our rate comparison, we're still going to be on the electric side. On the residential, we're about ten percent below XL Energy and single digits below Minnesota Valley, but we're still going to be competitive in the, in those markets. So, we thought it was very important that if we were going to increase this, that we were also able to keep our, our rates consistent. So, we were able to do that and we did a rate study. So, so yes, the extra one point, one point seven percent-ish, I think for, one point six percent will be about an additional five hundred thousand dollars in, into the general fund and then about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. All depends on where the revenues come in at because it's gross revenues. So, depending on where that is, we'll be in economic development.
And this is a percentage of overall gross sales and revenues of both water and electric. It's not some devised formula that was very hard to figure out. It had a tilt towards water, which kind of negative impacted the utility from that. So, this is a cleaner look from the top and, and that's what we, we've agreed to. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I kind of want to just talk just very quickly about the impact that this has on your property taxes. Now, why would this have an impact? As Counselor Lehman has pointed out many times before, our property tax system really hurts those the most that are, 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 are property owners, but that are low-income people. What this essentially does, because, because recognize that the City of Shakopee has a budget. And that budget doesn't change just because we have different types of income that come in. The budget remains the same. What that does though is it shifts the burden from those low, low-income property owners to, if you think about it, the high-energy and high-water users. So, essentially, what we're doing here is offering a form of property tax relief to your low-income personnel. It, 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 it is really in and of itself a kind of innovation when you think of it that way as we try to address those inequities that we all recognize, even as those property, uh, uh, property levels continue to rise because of, of the increase in the property values. So, this is a shift from the burden from those property users or those property owners to the high-energy and water users.
Counselor Lehman?
So, will this point five percent be on an individual account line item?
We will, we will be giving that to the city and, and they will put it in a, in a fund, I believe that is, because there is a, some minor restrictions on this, that it is on, there's a, some service territory that we don't have from the utility standpoint and it has to be on, on economic development that's going to help the utility in water and electric. So, there is some restriction. So, I think they've talked about putting it in, in a fund that they understand that. So, I don't know, that's not, that's not for me to decide. We're going to, we're going to get, cut the check over and the city will have to allocate that.
So, my, my question is, is will my individual water bill show a point five percent line item?
Absolutely not. It, it's not a charge. It is, it is a payment on the in, on the, on the?
Gross revenue.
Thank you, gross revenues. It's not?
Total water used.
Correct. It's, it's, on, on the monetary value of it, it's not an extra charge.
We have not itemized, it's embedded in our rates for both water and electric. So, we don't itemize out, just like we don't itemize out wholesale power, we don't itemize out pumpage. We, this is just part of our bill and it's, it'll be just like that, it's embedded in our rates.
Counselor. Couple of things, but I'll hit that first, but in the recitals here, it spells it out very clearly, the five point five percent of this SPU's annual gross-defined sales for electric and water utilities as defined herein. And it goes on to, the gross-defined sales shall mean SPU's gross water and electric sales of residential, commercial, and industrial usage. And then it goes on to say stuff about the power cost adjustment, fixed charges and security lights, things like that. But it spells it out pretty clearly in here. But now, to get to my point, point five percent for EDA, wow, that's innovative. That's, that's great and, and another tool in our box. But, you know, I understand, you know, we want to try and pigeonhole that to something that might be a, be a high-water user, a high-energy user, something like that. That's a win-win situation for everybody. So, we always look for those tools to put in our EDA toolbox. Hey, we got another one now, that's great, so thank you. More?
One more question. Will any of this cause rate increases?
We, we proposed our rates this next year are going to be on electric side, it's going to be a one percent rate increase plus the cost of wholesale power. So, that could be, you know, it's a portion of your bill, so, but on operations, it, we have a one percent increase. And there's a five percent increase on water rates. We, we, this is part of the budget and there are many other things. Cost of, you know, just everything is more expensive. Obviously, it's inflation the way it is and cost of, we're putting up a water tower and drilling wells. And so, we had to incorporate that into, but that, what rates are going to be next year. And this will be part of the rate structure. So, is there, is this a minor portion of it, very minor, one percent, one point some percent? A little bit upwards pressure, but overall, very support, supportive of this. And what we're trying to do and making sure Shakopee is successful, making sure that development can happen and we, we have the infrastructure in place. So, this is part of our budget, but along with the West End and the East End, we got water lines running, we got water towers going up. We have a new substation going up, so we incorporated all those things into our budget, not just this. So, does this affect it a little bit? Sure, it does, but overall, I wanted to make sure that we were competitive rates, that was very important to me. When we, when we viewed this, could we give a little bit more and still have competitive rates? And the clear answer was yes, we could. And, and that's the reason that why I think it's going to be a huge success for the city as well as for the organization, Shakopee Public Utilities.
Well, I think this, you know, for Shakopee and growing on our West End with residential, you know, when, when, you got to remember, when we make a plat and approve a, a plat, more customers for the utility, right? And, and when we turn city blocks into apartment buildings, more users, right? Good for the city, good for the utility. I think it's a, I look at it and go, it's a win-win all the way around. So, those are, those are my comments. We worked long and hard over the summer and the fall on this, so here we are. Good work. Counselor Contreras?
Mayor, just really quick, as I was sitting here, I was writing just down some words. And to me, this all just shows that there's great communication, awesome growth, and a great partnership. And I know we've all worked really hard and thank you to Counselor Brennan for everything, to you guys, you know, to Spock and just the effort, you know, and you guys sitting down and talking because there was such an issue. So, thank you very much, very much.
You're welcome, it's, it's been a pleasure and, and I concur with Mr. Reynolds. Anything that, that we talk about, he, he said, just call me and I've called him a couple of times and he calls me right back. Or we email and we have lunch on a regular basis, as well as some of the city staff I've had lunch with to make sure that we're all on the same page. And Mr. Kerski helped me out with the school district on some stuff we're working on. So, regular, regular emails all the time and, and we get together to make sure that we're on the same page and I plan on continuing that relationship.
Thank you.
Counselor Brennan?
I, I really, I don't have too much to say. I was stepping back and letting other people talk about it. I, I, you know, it's been a, it's been a, an interesting year and we've, we've accomplished a lot on the commission. And, and I think that's all going to benefit the city as a whole. So, I appreciate the work that everybody on the commission has done and the staff, so.
Can you get a motion?
Oh, sure, all right.
Excellent.
I, I'll do that.
I think we can, we'll, we'll take care of that one.
Make a motion to approve, what? I make a motion to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one seven two, which approves the agreement between the City of Shakopee and Shakopee Public Utilities regarding payment in lieu of taxes, or the pilot. Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. I do want to make sure where my thoughts are on this. I really want to thank Greg Trent, Kathy Mokel, Bill Reynolds, Jody Brennan. In the last year, we've really all come together and, and a lot of positive things have happened between the utility and the city. This pilot agreement is going to set the pace for a couple of decades here and, and offer certainty and show how strong the partnership. And I'm grateful for the board leadership at the utility and the leadership at the utility, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
I really don't like the economic development piece. I don't, I don't want to see residents being forced to pay for something. They don't have an opt-out option. I don't like that portion of it. But since it's not a line item line, takes a little bit of the pressure off because, you know, Mr. Reynolds's argument is valid, that your larger users are a larger portion of your total volume. But that being said, you're taking the dollars to use for EDA and you want these yet-large users that you give tax incentives to for fifteen years and they, so they're not paying for the services into the general fund. So, there's a lot more pieces going to this than meets the eye, so. That's my one concern with the EDA portion of it, but that applies with the city's EDA process, whether the utility is involved or not.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand that, but I, I do think that every opportunity we can get to get a, a industry in here helps those ratepayers to stabilize rates. So, if we can get large users in here and use this tool to get them, I, I, Mr. Kerski sent me an email at five o'clock today and we were discussing it in the back, you know, something that's five to seven megawatt load and, and is there a way to, to help assist that? That will make rates stable for our residential customers in the future. So, if we're able to utilize this properly and get some of these large users, this is a great thing for the utility and for the city.
Excellent. Motion on the table and a second, further discussion. Uh, motion on the table and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Kathy.
Merry Christmas. Alright, let's move ahead then to eight A three, contract for lobbying service, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, and members of council. Uh, this, i- i- it's no surprise that we have been discussing the impact of visitors on our community, uh, for some time now, uh, amongst city staff and city council. Uh, it may be a surprise to some people in the community, uh, as we start talking about it now, but I want to start off by saying that, you know, we are frankly the upper Midwest's entertainment destination, and that's a great thing. And we embrace that, uh, it's in part of our, it's part of our tagline about us being entertaining. Uh, it's important to us. It's important that our entertainment destinations succeed. Uh, if they succeed, we succeed. And, uh, it's critical, uh, that, that, that everybody understands that that will always be the position of, of, of the city, uh, that we, uh, want to do everything we can to partner, and we have. Uh, we've partnered with Canterbury Park, for example, where we quite literally have, uh, you know, have thirty million dollars of TIF that has went into infrastructure, into their property to be able to develop that and move it forward. We've, uh, been working collaboratively with Valley Fair for, for at least as long as I've been here, and I know that, uh, the chief and his people have been doing it way before me. Uh, so, that's the starting point. But as you know and recognize, about three years ago, uh, Chief Tate and his, excuse me, and his staff began to take, uh, a, a, a poll, if you will, of our monthly incarceration rates. And I've been forwarding to them, to you on a monthly basis ever since then. And what we traditionally have seen in those is that seventy to seventy-five percent of the people that Chief Tate and his people have to put under arrest and, and, and in custody arrest, aren't from the city of Shakopee. Now, that opens up a whole, uh, range of thought, and for me, the thing that really, that struck me was, is that why is it that my property taxpayers are footing the bill for seventy-five percent of, 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 of people that are coming in and impacting, uh, uh, our, our particular expenses? And, uh, so, about a year and a half to two years ago, I started, uh, discussing, um, not really in public, although I did mention it to Valley Fair, uh, CEO at one point and some others, uh, as well as the chamber, uh, about this concept of what if we could simply put, at that time, I was just calling it a ticket tax, it basically said, you know, we'd put, and I think the initial discussions, we'll look at a quarter for every ticket for a venue in town, and then that could go to our emergency services personnel, uh, to offset that property tax levy. Um, the reality is, is I don't know if that's possible for a lot of reasons. One, I don't know legally what we could get, because it has to be brought through the legislature. Two, I don't know what politically, uh, is, is, is viable either. So, this is the first step of a dis, a long discussion, uh, we, and it needs to be a long discussion, because we need to work in concert with our partners, our entertainment partners and with the chamber, uh, so that we all can agree on, on something, and then if we can agree, then hopefully that can be something that our legislatures would agree to as well. Uh, but the first part and the first step of that is finding people with knowledge that can help us on this journey. We don't have that knowledge here. Uh, uh, we need, we need, we need to bring, uh, an organization in that, that does this on a regular basis, that has the relationships on, on, uh, the statehouse grounds, that can help us with this discussion. Again, having no preconceived notions what is possible, one way or the other, but this is the first step of, of, of beginning that, of that journey, if you will. So, uh, both the Assistant City Administrator and I had been talking to several different lobbying firms and, uh, after some discussion, uh, with Ann Luszuski, we made a determination that LGN would be a perfect, uh, organization to help us out with this. And Ann, I know that you're on board, uh, I don't know if you would like to introduce yourself, if possible.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ann, thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Administrator Reynolds, and nice to see you, council. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to also introduce a couple team members, um, but I, if we're, if we're honored enough to earn the ability to work for you, we're three of the folks who would be, um, working for Shakopee's agenda at the Capitol, so, I'll just start, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, by introducing myself. Uh, my name is Ann Lucheski, and I'm a former suburban city council member myself in the Twin Cities, who then went on to serve in the legislature for nine terms. I chaired the tax committee, and five years ago, I left the legislature and I now help local governments succeed at the Capitol. So, um, we work in a bipartisan way, there's a large group of us, there's ten of us, and we're on both sides of the aisle so that we can work with the House Democrats, the Senate Republicans, and the governor, which of course, they are all in charge, and we will need your ideas to get across the finish line with all three of them. So, with that, I'll let, um, two more colleagues introduce themselves.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Angie Hus, thank you for having us tonight. I've been with the firm for about three years, and prior to that, um, I came from Republican politics. So, I worked for Congressman Eric Paulson from the third official district for a number of years, in both his official district office as well as on his, um, campaign. And then, since I've been at Lockridge, really closely with Ann Lucheski, I have a number of different local government items, so, thanks again for having us and, and look forward to meeting you all in person.
And I'm Colin Chean, and I have been with Lockridge, uh, lobbying and doing government affairs for ten years now. Um, prior to that, I was, uh, working in the state senate, um, uh, as the chief of staff for the senate Republican caucus, um, and, and, uh, spent the last twenty-plus years in, uh, politics and government, so, looking forward to working with, uh, you all.
Thank you very much for that introduction and, uh, questions of staff or...
Yeah, so essentially, Mr. Mayor, what we're, what we're asking is for the ability to enter into a contract with LGN to start this process, uh, and obviously, uh, that includes updates to council as a whole, uh, as, as we move things forward and, uh, uh, either staff or LGN are obviously here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions of staff, comment? I guess we've all seen those monthly numbers on, from Chief Tate and, you know, uh, love our entertainment community, it's a value, it's a plus for our community. At one time, I think someone said we had eight million visitors in our community annually that come through. Um, obviously, I think most of those are day trippers, right? They come for the day and they go to the Canterbury or they go to Valley Fair. Um, great to have them in our community, um, but then there's kind of the cause and effect aspect of it. I know years ago, when Canterbury actually started, uh, right off the bat, the legislator approved a little tax on the ticket to help offset, because our, the community, we were all concerned that, that it's great, this thing is coming, but the impact and the, the police resources and all that, and, and so that little ticket tax was allowed. Um, of course, uh, financial troubles came Canterbury's way back then, Canterbury, um, downs and, and they, we took that away or was removed and, uh, um, certainly, I don't think that helped them, uh, survive, but, uh, uh, here we are again, thirty years later, so, um, Counselor, or Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mayor, a- as I put in the memo, and I think this is incredibly important, um, people do not make decisions on whether to go to Valley Fair or Canterbury based upon a very small surcharge on their ticket. Uh, and, and I think it's important to recognize that, and, you know, I, we have a responsibility to our prop, and this is something we're obviously going to get into much more detail in the future, but from my perspective, we have a real responsibility to our, our property taxpayers to ensure that, that if there is an adverse impact from, uh, from our entertainment, and, and we certainly have been able to track, uh, a, a small impact, um, then, then we should at least look at options for offsetting what the, what those fees and what those charges and what those expenses are.
Counselor Lehman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we, we just talked about, a little bit about the, the arrests of non-citizens, but I know we also get the report on the venues or, or businesses or, or actually, uh, even apartment buildings that have the, the higher number of police calls to them on a monthly basis, and typically, our entertainment venues during the summer months are always, uh, on that list, topping the list, most, in most cases, many cases. Um, so, there's definitely a concern, definitely a need there. Um, I don't see an issue with a ticket tax to the person coming to buy the ticket. Um, and the thing here though, we're, we're hiring a lobbying, or we're looking at hiring a lobbying firm, and you know lobbyists, they have that bad stigma, sorry, but, uh, you know, it's a, it's a fact of nature. I've always kind of been opposed to lobbyists from one side of the view, but then, as I've been involved with a lot of these groups, uh, it's a necessary evil, so, you have to, you have to get your point across and you got to get it to the people that, uh, make the decisions, and so, if we're going to be going, uh, trying to, uh, work something out with the legislature, I think, uh, the only way we can move things forward is, is by getting a lobbying group. Uh, and not just for that, but there's some other things we're going to be looking at, uh, lobbying here too, so, uh, um, it's, like I said, necessary evil.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, first question is, the proposed price per year, is this a one-year commitment that we're being asked for?
Yes, sir.
Is it a twenty-two budgeted item?
Uh, this is not in the budget, but it certainly is, I mean, we can find funding for it, I probably have that in my professional services budget, which I never really tap into unless it's needed.
Without a budget amendment? Okay. And then, a couple of comments, I'm all in favor of the ticket tax, that's, that's a no-brainer to me. Um, now, whether we can get it passed through legislation or not is a whole other question to figure out. Um, my bigger concern is the soil deficiency tax increment financing district legislation. Um, I'm not, I'm not ready to be supportive of that. I don't like to see properties taken off the tax rolls, I like to see equity and property tax, uh, distribution, so if, you know, I, I, my mindset is, we've got folks that have owned this gravel pit, they've made their millions on reclamation, it's their responsibility to put it back to a developable state at their expense, um, not at the taxpayers' general's expense, um, and I certainly don't want to develop it, supply services to it, and not have the general fund reserve equitable taxes from the property, which a TIF district would put the money back into the project.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, uh, absolutely legitimate concerns, uh, and you're not the only one, Counselor Lehman. Um, I think that, uh, that is a big discussion for the future. Um, uh, and, and I don't know if it would be successful on this council, uh, but, the whole point is, is that if it is something that we are going to consider, we at least need somebody that knows what they're doing about it. Ultimately, that decision will become in front of council, it may or may not, uh, uh, but, but if it does, uh, then that would be the time to bring up, uh, those concerns. I think they're absolutely totally legitimate concerns, and you're not alone in that.
And then just, uh, you know, this comment about dirty dirt, as I call it, you know, we've had, you know, some experience in it lately, right? We have, uh, new Shakopee flats that had some dirty, dirty dirt in it, and we got some grant money, um, the old city hall that was our property, that had some abatement on dirty dirt as well. Or Southbridge. Huh? Southbridge as well. Um, and then we had a development out in Southbridge that was graded and grassed for twenty years, and then all of a sudden, a development came and, oh, there's dirty dirt, because it used to be a dump.
Well, wait a minute.
And...
This gravel, gravel pit site can't have dirty dirt on it, they removed everything from the site. If there is dirty dirt on there, we know exactly who put it there.
Well, we can...
It's not like a twenty-year-old issue.
Right. It'll degrade. Um, and I think that's part of the, the true discussion in the end, but we need to explore it and find out more on it. Um, like Mr. Reynolds said, uh, I think there's some concern from you, and I, I'll say I have some concerns as well, I need to learn more about it. So, that's how I look at it, um, and so... That's not the discussion tonight, but I'm, I'm with you, I, I have a lot of questions on that, but, uh, the lobbying firm is not, uh, you know, it's kind of out of, out of scope here, so, compared to that conversation, but we would need them, we would need them for the, for, if we go farther with that, so, I see where the value is there, but, but the broader conversation definitely needs to be had. Uh, so, uh, with that, I'd make a motion to approve, uh, to enlist the firm, Lockridge Grindel, the known, uh, for lobbying services on behalf of the city. I have a motion and a second, um, further discussion, uh, further discussion, Counselor Lehman?
I would be more apt on the second part, instead of looking at legislation to give somebody that's done something knowingly and willingly a free ride on everybody else's expense, I would be more apt to look at legislation, holding them responsible for reclamation of the site for development.
Good point. Um, maybe we'll find out more from this. Um, you know, I think the main focus here, I, to me, the main focus of this consulting lobbying, um, agreement really is for our ticket tax, for our entertainment, cause and effect aspect, and then what more can we find out about, um, the gravel pit and the opportunities? Um, you know, and when we talk about lobbying, you know, I, I think we all lobby, you know? I think we all lobby. I do, I lobby all the time on behalf of the city, a little stipend for it, uh, every year, um, lobbyists, we're all lobbyists, when it really gets down to it. We lobby on things we, we think are important for our community, um, and et cetera, uh, so I, I... I saw the value in the lobbyists when, uh, through Minnesota Valley Transit and, uh, because the way the funding is for transit and things and constantly having to do battle for, for the dollars and for different things that, uh, working even be, between, uh, different regional governments, uh, you almost need a lobbyist to get the conversation started, so, um, I understand, so...
It's not really a lobbyist, it's more of a navigational person.
Well...
If you really think about it, that's what it is.
Especially over in St. Paul.
Well, because they're, they're not, they're not lobbying, we're doing the lobbying, they're just doing the navigational work for us.
And, and, and as, as all of you know, in my prior life, I was a chief of staff for a US senator, and I dealt with lobbyists on a daily basis. And lobbyists are like anyone else, there are some great lobbyists and there are some that, you know, aren't so great. And it really is all about reputation, and frankly, LGN has a, a stellar reputation, both Chelsea and I looked into their backgrounds, uh, and I was very satisfied with what we were able to find, so I can tell you that, uh, lobbyists are exactly that, Counselor Lehman, they are someone that helps present your particular item. They're not doing it for anything on their own behalf, they're doing it for us.
Good. Uh, further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Uh, Ann, Colin, Angie, thank you very much, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Alright, let's move ahead. Eight B one, uh, community engagement update, and Carla will per, or Jay will present.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, I, my flight landed at seven PM and I came here straight away, and the reason is because, uh, this is... because, uh, this is important to me, and this is important to our department. In 2019, you gave us approval to create this position, and the impact that it's had on the community, on the business community, and in our department in particular, has been incredible. The, the fact that it's only been two years, and one of those years was under COVID, and we've made this progress, we're way ahead of the, of the schedule that I had in mind of where we'd be, uh, in developing sponsorship donations and volunteers, and I'm very excited for Carla to share that information with you this evening.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Um, yeah, I'm excited to come here. Thank you for all appointing me to this community engagement position. It's been very exciting, um, very, as my husband says, riveting. It's been very, I've, I've loved every minute of it, so I love to talk. So Jay told me to make this short, but I love to talk, so... But you should have in your packet, I put a, a report together based on this past year for the areas of volunteer sponsorships and donations. It's pretty well explanatory, um, this past year, since without COVID, we finally got to get more engaged in our community and events and programs, and people were obviously ready to get out and about. So we had about 110 volunteers this year, who put in a total of about 570 hours. Uh, that's just volunteering in our regular park and rec programs and events, and you'll see the beautiful pictures we took of all of our fun volunteers. The next section, which is the Adopt a Park program, which I think was adopted in 2009 and approved, um, when I took over that position, we have 36 parks and open spaces, and at that time, we only had 12 or 13 that were adopted. And since last year, since I took over, we are now up to almost 24 parks and open spaces that are adopted. And what I love about it, it's businesses like ComScope and Seagate that are calling me and finding out about it, and we have, um, some nonprofits. Um, what's great is our group homes, we have Ultimate Sustainability, Thomas Allen, who are bringing their young adults out to get them to understand community service, be a part of the community, and how to take care of their parks and, and open spaces, so... And a lot of, uh, just little neighborhood parks and families who are interested in doing that. So, with those volunteers, 165 volunteers, and so they put in about 1,647 hours. There is a value, if you're not aware of, there is a value to all the volun- for each person and their volunteer hour. So based on the National Nonprofit Center Leadership Center, they value a volunteer hour at about $27.20. So, in total, between our general volunteers with park and rec programs and the Adopt a Park program, we saved a little over $60,000 just in having people give of their time, whether it was once a month, twice a month. This Adopt a Park program, some of these people, it is their heart and soul, and so, um, they email all the time, whether they see graffiti or they see something broken, they're not just out cleaning the park, they're taking care of their parks. So that's what's really, really cool to see. So, um, that is awesome to have those volunteers, and what I'm liking, too, is I'm getting more involved with the school district, getting more involved with CAP, um, the Esperanza, the Heritage Society, so people are coming out that are wanting to partner, whether it's on a volunteer or donation basis, or just to sponsor, just to be a part of the community and give back. So, those are great programs. The other program on the last two pages are the sponsorships and donations. So we have probably five or six big events that we do, and the businesses have really come out to, after COVID, they just wanted to get out and get, get out, and then, um, to promote themselves. We've got a lot of new businesses that are coming into town, so I'm going out and hitting the pavement and talking to those folks. Um, and it's really, some of these are really nominal fees to be a sponsor. We're looking at, um, redoing our sponsorship package, so we've had a lot of people step up and take our, um, movie or our, um, uh, concert in the series. We had two businesses that gave us 2,500 each, they just wanted to get out there, we put their name on the banner and give them what they can and hopefully promote their business, too. So, and it's not just the sponsorship and the dollars, it's the, um, donations. A lot of businesses are all giving back, whether gift cards or whatever it may be, just 'cause they wanna get their name out there and get business going. So, um, I have to say that the partnerships that we have developed have totally resulted in an increase in our community involvement, community participation, and has definitely helped the city, um, save some dollars, and having staff have to go out and do the work that our volunteers, um, are doing, um, and keeping our costs low for our residents in the city. So, with that, you also have a resolution, um, part of, the other part that I do is donations from the Heart Program, um, but we did have some donations in this last May. You approved four donations, um, now since then, we've had, or you approved five donations this sh- this last month, or this last few months, we've had four other, uh, donations come through. Three of them were for, uh, donations for our programs, uh, whether it was just all programs, our egg hunt, our summer carnival, from Cherry Berry, JCI in Shakopee, those were all $1,000 or more, so therefore, we need your approval for that one. And the last one is a memorial, the memorial, donations from the Heart Program. Um, we had a young girl whose life was taken this last year, and so we had, uh, family, uh, the friends and family of them raised, uh, the money that was needed to purchase two benches. One bench is at O'Dowd, uh, Park, uh, she was, uh, on the bike team, and the other bench is at the Southbridge Small Dog Park. She has a love for dogs and had her own little dog. And then, they also purchased six trees with plaques that are all planted along the, the Red Oak Trail out in Southbridge. It's the new trail that was developed this last summer fall. So that was all planted, they did a great memorial celebration after that was all done, so that is, um, also needs to be approved in the amount of $5,500. So, with that, we're just seeking council approval for Resolution R 2021-178. Any questions?
Mr. Reynolds?
No question, but just a comment. Um, return on investment is something I look at on a daily basis. I was not in favor of Carla doing this. Jay Tobin kept bugging me and saying no, much like Chief Tate did several years ago when we had our grant coordinator position. Uh, I was wrong then, I'm wrong now. Uh, it's been a tremendous, uh, uh, tremendous, uh, position, and, and Carla is the exact person for that position, and you look at the return on investment, uh, this is a hu- about $150,000 for, uh, the work, and she's just getting started, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we're just getting started, so, uh, Carla, outstanding job.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, you'll remember, when we did our bus trip, Carla was able to get us a free bus, and was the bus driver for that trip, and that's, that's exactly the kind of stuff that she's been doing. Uh, just a bang-up job, and, uh, uh, thanks for pestering me, Jay, and, uh, Carla, thank you for accepting the, the challenge and just knocking it out of the park.
Well, thank you for your approval and acceptance of the position.
Counselor Whiting?
I, I had no doubt that any job you would be handed, you would handle. So, uh, great work.
Thank you.
That, that is fabulous, so, uh, yeah, and, and to me, um, it's not just the, the donations, it's, it's the outreach, and, and being out there with the community, it's, you know, City of Shakopee, being involved and getting people involved in the parks, and, and so that, that's the value, to me. But, um...
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I, I've been able to attend some of the events, and there's just a real enthusiasm from the community to participate, and it's great to see the volunteers and the number of, of giveaways that are available, um, that the businesses have provided, and so it's, it's, you know, it's good to see. I, I think I helped with the egg, uh, the Easter egg hunt, and, and just all the kids that were so excited. So I, I, any way that we can support those, um, programs, you know?
Yep, yep. The JCI buys all the prizes for that, so that's about $1,500 they spend every year out of their own budget, and then they have their big tent and they take care of that area, and then if the little kids get an egg with a little coin and a number, they go redeem their prize. So, yeah, that's been a partnership for a long time with the JCI of Shakopee.
Yeah.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the, the monetary donations are always nice, but I think we gotta make sure we don't undervalue the, the labor side, because I, you know, at 27.20 an hour or something, I, I think the, the labor side is, is as, if not more important than the dollar amount.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we see that over the years in the, in Neighborhood Watch, trying to prevent crime, be the eyes and ears, community, these types of things. Um, the, the, the return on that labor and that investment is, is pretty substantial, so I, I would venture to say it's probably more than 150,000.
Well, it's interesting, 'cause before I came over, I happened to pull up that national, whatever, nonprofit. Uh, they've already got it up to almost $30 for next year already. So, I mean, it's, especially when I think of the Adopt a Park program, I mean, some of these people really get into it, so, and it's, it's fabulous.
Well, good effort, appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Carla, uh, thank you for stepping up and stepping in to our community, and here, after a year, even during COVID and all that, uh, the residents, and I agree with Counselor Lehman, the, the volunteer, we can put on a great event, but if you don't have the volunteers...
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Um, our residents have stepped up and in as well. Uh, the dollar donations are, are super. I know I gave to, uh, uh, moving the park. I hope that those opportunities continue. Um, it really shows and brings out the best of our community for engagement, and, um, you're leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm working on a community, or a community engagement brochure, so you guys will see that soon, so it highlights all of these different areas. It's not a volunteer brochure and a Adopt a Park brochure, they're all gonna get combined, so everybody knows how they can get engaged in the community in the different capacities. So we're putting it in one format.
Sometimes you just gotta tell people where to spend the money.
Yep, so you just have to get the word out, yep.
Uh, Counselor Contrance?
Thank you. How can we forget the shuttling? You shuttled us at Quarry Lake, remember? Back and forth, that was a long walk.
Oh, yeah, I shovelled there, too. I worked there, too, didn't I? Well, I'm just showing people how to volunteer and give back, right?
So, thank you, yeah.
I'm remodeling.
Yes, thank you for your driving. Um, and yeah, the engagement that you're doing with the community, amazing. So with that, if I could, um, make a motion to approve Resolution R 2021-175, accepting donations and scholarship funds for park and recreation programs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, happy holidays.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's move ahead then, to 8C1, the acquisition of a portion of, uh, Windermere Bluff property for op- for park and open space from Norcore. And Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, this is a purchase of bluff property and donation of land for park and open space out at Windermere. This is the site. Um, so the city would be acquiring, uh, the northernmost portion of the property, and they have a contract to sell the southernmost property to a developer for residential development. So basically, the kind of hashed area in yell- in pink would be, um, become the city's, and basically, the bluff line kind of follows that red line, and then the lower bluff is below that. So, the city would actually be, um, purchasing the upper portion, and the Norcore family would be donating the lower portion. Um, this has been in the works for many years. This is Windermere, you can see how the trails just kind of end here as part of this project long-term. The private developer of the southern portion will be completing the trail at the, uh, middle of the screen, and then longer term, as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the trail at the top, uh, would continue through the bluff. We are working, um, also with the adjacent property owner to the west that is currently under contract, um, part of the Bregman property. So, the, uh, if you remember the West End Study, which was done back in 2016, talked about kind of creating the public greenway here, uh, with that piece will almost be all the way to County Highway 69. So again, the city's purchasing approximately 14 acres of the bluff for $458,264, which is basically the park dedication fees dedicated by the southern property. Uh, the Norcore, uh, which is the Tice family, would donate approximately 10 acres below the bluff for $640,000. Staff recommend city council approve Resolution 2021-179 to purchase the land and accept the donation of the land from Norcore.
Thank you, Michael. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Where is this in relation to the park with the potential outlook tower on it?
Uh, Mayor and council, this is on the other end, um, so this would be way north of that. Um, you can see in this photo, Windermere, um, the original Windermere subdivision's kind of in the lower right-hand corner, so about, probably half a mile from here is that other park.
Can you go back a slide? Or two slides? There.
There we go. You can see, this is the park, Councilmember Lehman, that you're talking about, right here.
The tower's in there.
Right about where the cursor's sitting.
Let me step back, too.
But you can see on this slide, um, I forgot I had this again, the rest of the bluff, um, so the Bregman property is the next parcel, and we've been working with the family, um, on acquiring the rest of that portion of the bluff, and then there'll only be basically one parcel left to get to County Highway 69.
Good. Uh, more questions of staff?
This was identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as a regional park, so this would serve not only the residents here, but, um, all the residents of Shakopee as a major kind of, uh, nature trail.
And, um, and this is, uh, we're acquiring it for, for 150,000, the, the landowner is donating, um, 50% more than that in value, at 640, right? Of, of land value?
Mayor and council, as many of you know, um, the Tice family own much of this area, and this is kind of their last holding, um, and they've had this for quite a long time. They have, uh, worked with, uh, Randy Kubis. So Randy Kubis is gonna be purchasing the southern part, and we've been working with him for about a year on a plan. One of the issues had been, all of the property to the west of here, which is Bregman's property, kind of flowed onto this property, since that's now under contract, and we have a concept plan, which we're actually discussing tomorrow, um, he can now move forward on his side, and then also complete, um, putting through, um, 17th, which would go through his property eventually to, um, 69, so...
Go back to the previous, that map there, yeah.
So you can see the road right now just ends there.
Yep.
So we've been waiting for the Bregman parcel and, um, the Norcore parcel to come through, which allows that road to continue down, and there's one more parcel that needs to cross to get to, um, County Highway 69.
Seventeen, 17 would go west and then curve to the south.
Mayor and council, that's correct. The other benefit is this, we've had, um, because this property's been kind of a block, we have not been able to get sewer and water through here. Um, working with Shakopee Public Utilities, they'll be putting a water line kind of on the lower end of the bluff, and the city will also have access to bring our sewer main to the west end through the lower end if necessary.
The sewer would go on the north side, though, right? Up along?
Um, Mayor and council members, the sanitary sewer will actually go in mid- right-of-way is what we're planning on.
Yeah.
So it'd be on the north side of this parcel, correct?
Got it. Um, we've always wanted to protect that bluff line, and, uh, you know, we've talked about it for years and years, so this is a great step. Other questions of staff? If not, thank you.
You, you took my point, that bluff is something we've been talking about, kinda, think, well, what's gonna happen? We wanna try and protect that bluff, and, uh, so it's great that we got our hands on it, and it's preserved for everybody.
Protect the bluff.
Right.
And then give access to, to, so we can use it.
Yeah, 'cause I've wanted to go down and check that.
I mean, I saw one plan where we had a big roadway and houses, and then, uh, the houses would be backed up to the bluff and, and, you know...
This is for everybody.
No, where's that access, right?
So with that, I'd like to approve Resolution Number R 2021-179, authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement with, uh, Norcore Properties and accepting the donation of property.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, on the table by Counselor Brennan. Um, really wanna thank the representatives and family from Norcore that talked about this for a couple of years, and, and, and here we are. Um, I think that's a big deal, so thank you. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next up, 9A, the city bill list is here for us, for our... Next up, nine A, the city bill list is here for us, for our review comment. Any questions? Otherwise, we would move forward then to nine B, our liaison report. Uh, Counselor Brennan?
Um, well, the, um, SPU didn't meet, meet yesterday because of the holiday coming up, um, and I have been attending the, um, CDA, Scott County CDA meetings, um, on a regular basis, and Julie Seegert, who is the Housing Director, has been, um, promoted to the Executive Director of the CDA, so, um, best wishes to her, and that's all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much. Counselor Lehman?
I dug for my notes, and I don't know what I did with them, but I'll try to do this by memory. Um, the scale meeting had the second part of the legalized marijuana discussion. Um, once again, I pretty much sat and listened. The, uh, what I did pick up was cities would not be able to opt-out, uh, under the current proposed legislation at the state, um, but they would be able to manage some of the finer points in, in zoning. Um, heard from two cities in Colorado that do have legalization. I, I think if I heard it right, in Colorado, uh, their, their state law allowed cities to opt-in or out. One was an opt-out, one was an opt-in, so we heard both sides. Um, so it's really at the state, and we're not going to have a whole lot of say in it of whatever happens. Um, so I, I would suggest, uh, and I had this conversation with, uh, Mr. Eris from the Police Department, that you, we're probably in a position that we have to look at what the negatives might be and try to have them addressed in the legislation. Um, don't know how successful we'll be, but, um, it's just something we're going to have to keep an eye on, I guess. The one sixty-nine quarter coalition, the dues will, are half-priced, um, again, and we're discussing it, making it a permanent, uh, reduction. Um, we'll see how that goes. The budget is in pretty good shape, so. Uh, the RTF Training Center, uh, revenues are starting to bounce back. That's a good sign. Um, there was a couple of small capital things that were on the docket, nothing out of line for the budget-wise. Uh, what else was on there? Yeah, we went over, one sixty-nine went over the projects, the, you're all aware of the money that came for the two eighty-two, nine, and Jordan. Leslie County Administrator was here at our last council meeting and kind of let that out, so that was good news. That's going to be, granted, that's a, you know, expensive project, but that is a chunk of money that's allocated, that, which means that there's serious about the future of improvements in that area, so, uh, that's good. The Savage is almost one hundred percent, if not one hundred percent funded, and that's going to be starting here this year, next year. So, pretty basic stuff. I wish I had my notes. I'm sure I'm missing something. I'll read them if I find them. They might be laying on the street somewhere.
Counselor, thank you very much. Um, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week, had the, uh, chamber meeting. Uh, Chambers, uh, under their new direction, uh, new director, uh, is, uh, trying to grow back from the COVID years, and so, uh, get the chamber, uh, back up and rolling, and getting people back into their meetings and trainings and things is, I'm sure, going to be a challenge, so, uh, good luck for them. Um, also, the MVTA meeting was the same day, um, working on our, we took the bids for Burnsville Bus Garage improvements. Uh, quite a spectrum of, of bids came in, was, uh, a couple of the different, we had quite a bit different line items, and several hundred thousand dollar disparities, so some of the items did, won't be, won't be, uh, worked on, but several will be, uh, through the low bidder, which we got a pretty good bid on, actually. We're also looking at, um, moving forward on, uh, cleaning systems within the buses themselves that, uh, are ionizing systems, that, uh, clean the surfaces and everything, uh.
Big sprayer, right?
Internal system, it's in the, in the air system, so it's not, uh, and it also has ultraviolet with it, but it, it's, it's ionizing, so it's, uh, um, keep your buses sanitary and cleaner, and, uh, with COVID, everything, it's definitely, uh, something that, uh, is needed, so, um, also, uh, did their annual, uh, new chair, uh, Burkhart from Prior Lake, and, uh, Block, I believe she's from Farmington, so she'd be vice chair. That's all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just have, um, for the school board, so during the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, truth and taxation hearing and school board meeting held at the Shakopee High School, the district shared that they, that the actual tax impact payable in two thousand twenty-two will be less than expected. The tax impact, yes, on an average price home in Shakopee of, um, three hundred and seventeen thousand, had an original proposed twenty twenty-two annual tax impact of five hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents for questions one and two. So the actual amount tax impact on the household will be a total of four hundred and nine dollars, so this is a hundred and eighty-eight less than expected, so good news.
Very good news.
That closes you with good news. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, for my mayor's report, um, not a lot here. I attended the Chamber appreciation event, um, last week. That was a great event. Uh, the Chamber, the Chamber's doing well, uh, new leadership and, um, working on engagement, and so that's great. Also, uh, coming up, I know we're in the midst of a holiday, and then it's the New Year's, and what are you going to do about yourself? So the Shakopee Community Center has a fitness open house, January eighth, from, uh, eight A.M. to eleven, to try out their different options in fitness, so, um, great event if you can attend. Um, administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, I have nothing other than to wish you all a very happy holiday season.
Thank you very much. Any other, uh, item number ten? Other business? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd just like to offer a season's greetings, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to the residents and businesses and staff of Shakopee, and rest of council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, otherwise, if there is no other business before this council?
No, I'd like to, um, adjourn us to Tuesday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion? Discussion? Um, Merry Christmas to all of our staff. Uh, Merry Christmas to all of our residents, Happy New Year. Please be warm, please be safe, and Happy New Year to all.
Merry Christmas.
Uh, motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes four to one.
Vacation.
We're adjourned at...